Hi, I'm Robert Hight, President and CEO of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. And we're here today with Councilmember Bart Turner and Board Member and Public Policy Chair Yvonne Connect. And what makes this conversation pretty unique is Yvonne, who is a former council member, served the district that now is occupied by Councilmember Bart Turner. So, welcome Bart, thanks for being here with us.
Oh, you're very, I'm very pleased to be here. You're quite welcome.
And Yvonne, thanks for helping make this happen.
Absolutely.
And thanks for leaving the district in such great shape.
Thank you.
It's been really a piece of work.
And thank you for taking it over and doing a great job.
It's so easy.
A mutual admiration.
This is going to be the most knowledgeable conversation because you've got the history, you've got the most recent history, so we've got it all bundled together. So, what we thought we would do is just start off and really, now that you have been serving on council the previous two terms and you're up for reelection and no challenger, which is nice and refreshing, so for all intents and purposes, you're going to be reelected and back in office. From thinking back when you first got on council or before you got on council now, what would be the biggest thing that surprised you of being private citizen Bart Turner to now council member, elected official Bart Turner?
The biggest surprise? I guess it's the variation between members of the council. There's different points of view among us. Some of us are mostly retired, if not for this job, others are working full time and have their own businesses. So, the amount of effort, not effort, but attention they can give it varies from council member to council member and certainly the different philosophies. It always seemed to me that there was more cohesion, I guess, than what I feel internally.
Well, you're right, there's a lot that goes into it. I mean, for every meeting, you will have a lot of preparedness to do, whether it's reading or doing some kind of fact finding of your own, so there is a lot of work in that. So, no, good point. All right, Yvonne, you're up.
All right. So, after eight years, what do you hope to accomplish in your next term?
I hope that we can turn the attention back to our neighborhoods and the quality of life that individual residents feel. We've had to be focused on rebuilding our financial situation, just like the councils before us were focused on how to save money and to react to the recession that they had to deal with. We've been working our way out of it. We've been, we've been successful, we've been blessed by having a strong national and local economy, and, you know, we've made a few good decisions, I think financially, that have helped us as well. But we need to, we need to focus back into our neighborhoods, I think, with our parks. We've done a great job on our streets, I'm really proud of our streets program, getting in my district, every neighborhood street has been resurfaced.
That's awesome.
And, which was the number one complaint that residents shared with me eight years ago when I was going to R. Door, was the condition of our neighborhood streets. We're still working on our tarials, but we'll always be working on those. And hopefully, and we'll be working continuously on our residential streets, too.
No, that's awesome. So, another question we had for you, looking back now for eight years, is there anything you wish that had been accomplished or that, you know, we came to fruition in this city that you see as an opportunity to keep working forward over the next term to make happen?
Well, I guess certainly there's been a few disappointments. I think one of the biggest disappointments was the council deciding not to go forward with light rail, bringing light rail to downtown Glendale the way that the residents had said, you know, the voters said they wanted us to. I think that was a short sighted decision. I voted against changing direction on that. I think if we were, this is 2022 today, if we were only two or four years away from light rail opening down here, we'd have a whole different feel about our downtown and where it was headed. Plus, I just don't like overriding voters, I just don't think that's appropriate.
Why?
Certainly losing Glendale Lake's golf course was something that, again, I think was short sighted. And here we are, just, you know, less than two years, I think, away from that decision. And we still don't have foundations, you know, homes going in over there on that parcel. It's been very slow development there. But again, it overrode what I felt was the voters' mandate. The voters had set aside authorization for up to $50 million, a little over that, I think, for open space preservation. And I don't know what's more open space preservation than the preserve of golf courses that already exist, whether it continued being a golf course or whether it became a neighborhood or a regional type park. You can't replace that kind of open space in our city anymore, and that's really where we needed the most. And so, those are a couple, I could probably do a few more if I had to.
No, I think it's just good for the business community members to know because, you know, I think you're right, there's a diversified mix of backgrounds and thought process from each council member and, you know, what you have championed and worked towards versus someone else and, you know, kind of where that feels. Because then, I think it helps the members in business to know that it's a very diversified group leading the city, and so it helps them to paint the picture. Because sometimes they see what they believe as the image of a council member, but then they don't really know what all goes on behind the scenes because they're busy in their businesses doing what they do best unless they hit a road bump in the road, then they're upset and want to know, who do I go to at City Hall? So, it's fair points.
Well, I'm going to read the next one because it's a little longer. With many issues facing our communities, such as affordable housing, inflation, homelessness, water security, et cetera, what do you feel your role as a city council member is on such vital topics?
Well, the council is the policy body for the city. We decide the overall direction of where we want things to go. It's also our job to make sure that the policies that we've adopted get implemented in the way that we adopted them, you know, the directions. So, we do have to oversee city management as they oversee city staff to make sure that the policies are being implemented as we directed. So, issues like homelessness, that's the toughest one on the list. And it's not just tough in Glendale, it's tough in the valley, it's tough in the state, it's tough throughout the southwest and across the country. It doesn't somehow seem to be as hard in some other developed nations, but let's just focus on what we can do. That's a super tough issue. It's tied in with affordable housing, but, and the price of housing is a function of supply and demand, and you're a business group and you understand supply and demand. And, you know, you don't want government stepping in there, taking that away, that we're, you know, we're out, you know, mandating what types of housing has to be built and what densities, you know, beyond zoning are required and things like that. You know, I wouldn't imagine you'd want us taking our existing zoning plan and saying, yeah, we're throwing all of this out, you know, we're not doing single family here anymore, we're doing multifamily. No, people, so they're tough. I'm on the, I represent the city and I have for almost eight years now on the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. I'm serving as president this year. So, the water issues are something I've been, you know, been working on and dealing with. We have water, but we're under water stress. We have, we're lucky and fortunate here in Glendale that we have different sources of water. We have Salt River Project water, CAP water, we have well water. We reclaim water and reuse it again and for certain applications. So, and we have water stored in the ground. We've been storing water purposefully in the ground over and above what would be your typical well water. So, and we have about a four and a half year supply of water stored, which doesn't sound very long, except we're not going to need to take it all out, you know, in four and a half years. It's also a 45-year supply of 10% of our water supply, if you want to look at it that way. So, if we have a 10% reduction in our water supply, be it from CAP, for instance, we've got stored water to get us through for quite some time while we figure out managing the rest of it. But...
Can I, we're tier one right now in Glendale. Do you want to explain that?
Tier one is kind of a wake-up tier, it's a heads up, you know, folks, the water situation's serious. We're not, there are no mandates for cutbacks in business, what are used for businesses or residences or anything like that. The city voluntarily takes on a reduction in our city facilities, that we're reducing our water consumption there. So, that's just the basic tier, but it's a means of, you know, trying to start getting people's attention here at the, you know, within the city. Now, as far as this, that's our city, that's our city tier. The state's tier one as far as the drought management plan and the Colorado River situation, and we're going to go to tier two, and we may race to tier three. What's happening with the Colorado River is not unexpected, it's just happening faster than expected. It's like being on a train going down the track. You know what the stops in front of you are going to be, you just don't necessarily know how fast the trains move. So, we're finding out the train was going faster than anybody anticipated and it's accelerating. And that's, it really is, you know, some people don't believe in climate change or that sort of thing. So, it's fine if you don't want to believe in it, but it's happening. You know, we're, we have the drought, 22 years now of drought. We have, we have higher temperatures along with it, so we're getting more evaporation. So, when we do get rain and snowfall, it is soaked into the ground because the ground's drier than it would have been under a normal 22-year drought, not that that's normal. And the same with the trees and everything else. So, and then in the Midwest and the East, they're getting exactly the opposite, they're getting huge rain events. They've always had rain, but they're getting it in big dumpings, which causes localized and regional flooding. And what's that water? It's our water. That's the water that's been coming out of ours. Yeah, it's just, but nature's doing it. I mean, they're not doing it, it's nature's doing it. That's, where's all that water coming from? It's coming out of Arizona, it's coming out of our soils, our vegetation, all of that, and it's sitting up there. So...
Well, I appreciate you being on AmWak because...
You're welcome. You were there before me.
I knew you would take my, do a great job, and congratulations on being president.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Well, a little luck, I'll be president again next year, they have a two-year term of it on the presidency.
Right.
But I'll be happy to take it again if they want to. This is, it's an exciting time to be in that role, it's challenging. But I've been a fan of water since I was just a little kid, so...
I think we all were, playing with the hose and jumping in the pool or the lake or the river, whatever it may be. You know, we just, Yvonne touched on a couple of big issues. You know, you've been in Glendale, you have a rich history here, you know, you have the, now the knowledge of your council seat for the last eight years. Is there anything issue-wise that you feel we as a chamber should be working on or engage in, in collaboration with you as a council member or the city as a whole? Is there anything that you feel we can do a better job as well? Because not just to those issues Yvonne mentioned, but just in general.
Mm-hmm. Certainly. And I remember the first, probably first, well, not chamber function ever, but the first campaign chamber event that I went to was about eight years ago, and it was a luncheon and panel discussion out at the Renaissance Hotel. And I remember saying then, and I believe it's still today, that the community benefits by having a strong independent Chamber of Commerce. And independent is important. You need to be able to take your positions and express your voice as a chamber in a way that will be respected without worry of any retribution or control or pushback from city government, whether it be the elected officials or be management and staff. And I still believe that, and so I encourage you to do it. I will point out that I think I have been, either I've been on the chamber side or they've been on my side, of every chamber issue that the chamber has taken a position on, perhaps, I guess with the exception of Glendale Lake's golf course. And I don't know how high of priority that was for the chamber, but I know it was a high priority for me and my neighbors and my district. And again, it was voter, the voters had said they wanted to preserve it. I think our tax rate is something the chamber, I would have liked to have seen the chamber active in already. It doesn't need drastic work, but there are places where we can trim it. We have to be careful doing that. But I have been, I don't think anybody on the council has said more often than me during our budget process, we should take a look at lowering our tax, our sales tax.
Okay, yeah.
I also believe that we should do away with the residential rental tax, where if you rent property, if you rent your house or your apartment, you're paying a tax on that, whereas if you own it, you don't. And I don't think it's, I just don't think it's right to tax some people for the roof over their head when we're not taxing others. The state legislature apparently agrees with me because they were within, I think, one vote this year...
One vote.
Of taking that out. And what I think we should do is, I'm not exactly sure how their bill, that the legislature was written, but I think, you know, this is one that's at risk. It may not be the one everybody would first like to get rid of, but it's probably where we should...
Just step in the right direction.
Right.
Well, and it's also, if it's going to be taken away, we should be the ones to do it so that we can plan for it. Okay?
I think that's a good point, because if we were one vote away in this current legislative session, and then they make the decision, they've made the decision for you all as the, you know, governing body or the city as opposed to starting to make those necessary steps.
Exactly. Or if we turn around and say, okay, so we're going to lower our overall sales tax rate on everything, and we do that, and then the legislature takes that away, too. Now, we're going to be in a sense definitely impacted, it's going to be, you know, so it's smarter for us to take a look at the big picture. And I would say do the right thing, which also happens probably to be the strategic thing, and to plan for it in a way that we can handle it within our budget. And now, obviously, not everybody's going to feel the impact of that, but again, to me, it's just not morally fair to tax one group of people for the roof over their heads when you're, as a sales tax, when you're not taxing the other. And I know people say, oh, well, they pay property to homeowners. Well, renters pay the property tax on the buildings that they're in as well, it's in their rent.
It's in their rent.
So, you know, the sales tax on rent is just an additional tax that they're paying that others don't. So, and then the other question is about the food tax. And I understand the food taxes are very sympathetic tax to get, to do away with, or, you know, it's a, some people see a food tax as being heinous, you know, it's like, how can you tax food? And everybody buys food. And it's also one of the ways in which we can recoup some sales tax for winter visitors that maybe aren't spending as much money as a local would on things like furniture and appliances and clothing and that other stuff. So, but they are buying food. And I, so I just feel like that's a fair tax, and there, we have programs in place for people that are families that are experiencing food stress. We have food banks, we have food stamps, we have help available if you're in that situation. And, you know, but for example, if somebody spends, you know, a family that maybe spends their food money on hamburger and other things, they're going to have a lower food bill than a family that's fortunate enough to be able to spend it without taxes and, or on steaks and lobster and others. So, it's, so the, it's not, it doesn't hurt poor people more than wealthy people, it just, it's, it's a fair tax across the board. But I, you know, I realize some people just patently don't like it. And indeed, if I hear from my residents that they really hate it and they don't, you know, they understand the logic, but they still want to get rid of it, then I would probably support that because I'm here to represent them. This is part of the juggling act of being an elected official. Are you just carrying water for your district? Or did you get elected to learn more, to make better decisions than your residents would have the ability to? So, sometimes you wear one hat, sometimes you wear the other.
No, good point. All right, Yvonne, next question.
Right. We know there are times perhaps a city and chamber have had and will have different points of view. How can you reassure our members in the business community your commitment to working with us to maintain an open dialogue between us and you as a council?
Okay. Well, I think I have, and as I mentioned earlier, I believe that the chamber and I have been aligned on virtually every issue that's come before us. And that's because, I think, because I think somewhat like a business person, you know, and I also think that the chamber understands the other things that I and our residents value in the community. They do value our parks and our quality of life, and they know that all of that is good for business. So, I don't think I've had a problem in having open communication with the chamber on issues, and I don't think that I will in the future.
I agree.
Well, I think it's important that, you know, when those, when, whether it's good, bad, right, or indifferent, but that the business community knows and they can, whether it's through us, when they go to who directly, but they have that direct access to get to their council member to talk through whatever that situation may be. As a chamber, is there anything that we can do to better work with you as a council member?
Stay strong, stay independent, engage earlier. You know, hearing about, hearing that we should be lowering our taxes on the day that we adopt our budget is a really good time. So, just engage earlier and maintain your independence.
Good point. Good point.
We understand that.
And I think you've shared that at many junctures along the way. And so, you know, as any Chamber of Commerce, you know, you grow, you evolve, you move forward, and I think the more that we continue to do that, and then what's important for us is having a diversified mix around the table because that is the voice. Well, it maybe needs to be geared up or out, but it's having that collective body of individuals and businesses and, you know, industry segments at the table. That helps the bulk to be kind of the pulse of the business community, which then we can speak to you all. And you're right, we can do a better job at engaging more and/or at least having the conversation with, whether it's council members or the city, to say, you know, these topics, we want there to be dialogue with the business community. So, whether or not there's a education backed by the mission, because if you, what you just said with the food tax, you know, you bring a different perspective than someone else. And so, when someone hears that, do they have a better appreciation for what that tax means or does, as opposed to someone else who says, I'm tired of being taxed and dual withholding taxes? So, I think it's, it's that back and forth, that fluid communication.
And I'd say, I'm not sure that there's anybody on the council that really better understands and appreciates the growth that this Chamber of Commerce has experienced in the last 10 years or so. I've been at Glendale for a long time, when I had local business, I was a member of the Glendale Chamber. And I've been paying attention a long time, and I've seen this virtually exponential growth in membership and influence and, and that's, I know that's paying big dividends to your members as far as networking and all of that, your business group. But it also should be having an impact on how you're heard in the rest of the community, especially in the elect, in the elect about it. So, I understand, I see what's going on, and I have respect for it. And likewise, I'd like to think the chamber understands, they've seen how things are different at City Hall, and also where we need to continue to be. And we can have back and forth dialogue on both.
Question, we'll do the wrap-up, but I want to ask, I'm going to ask all the council members. A lot of people really don't know what a council, what they do. You know, people unfortunately are very unaware of government in general, but especially at the local level, where it's so important. They go, I don't even know what the council does, and some of them think the mayor runs the city, and, you know, they don't understand that we are, you know, there are seven votes, it's not a strong mayor, former governor, but seven votes. And then there's the administration part. But what would you, how would you describe your job?
Well, it's kind of bifurcated. We have the part of the job that the charter says, which is that we determine policy and we create a budget that forwards that policy, we're saying. So, we do determine tax rates for the city portion of tax bills. Sales tax is part city, part state, part county. Property tax is county and school district, city and state. So, we're only affecting that part which we're affecting, but we do that to be able to implement the policies. We determine zoning on property, determine what land does come into the city limits and comes under our zoning and leasing regulations, or what land is left out. You know, we try to, you know, so we budget for those, for the priorities. If we think streets need to be improved, we put more money in the street budget, the same with parks, or the same with fire department or police or anything else. All of that is, those are all policy decisions. We also hire four very important positions. We hire the city judge, the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city manager. And it's our job as a council to manage all four of those employees. And then they manage their departments, and then the case, the city manager manages all the departments that aren't the clerk, the judge, or the attorney. And it's important to have a city council that does that part of the job properly. Don't just hire somebody and give them the keys, it doesn't work that way. And I don't care what business you've got, you don't just hire somebody and give them the keys. You have to properly manage people, let them know what the boundaries are, let them know if they got too close or overstabbed, and in healthy ways, get people back on track. You can have the most talented people in the world working for you, but they still need to be managed. And the management comes from not our own personal expectations, what's the community's expectation, where does the community want to go? And that's the part the charter talks about, really. And then the other part is, you're there as a liaison or an ombudsman between residents in your district and city issues and sometimes non-city issues. They'll call you and, now, we're not involved in the day-to-day operations and affairs of the city. We can't tell somebody to go blow their yard, and we can't fix a parking ticket, or do those sort of things. And I have been asked to fix a parking ticket, but, you know, that's the day-to-day operations of things, and we're not involved. But we do act as an ombudsman in helping connect residents to that part of the city which can resolve the issue that they're experiencing. And then we can kind of check back and, you know, see that things are being dealt with appropriately. But we don't step in there and tell the city employee that they need to do something. We should look at that situation from, do we have the right policies in place? And are they getting properly applied?
No, that's a good point.
And I think, too, you kind of alluded to it, you answer to your constituents, your residents, and that's the most important thing that you do, is you represent what they want. It's kind of like when a council member says, well, this is my, again, no, you need to represent, and you may not agree all the time with the people in your district, as we have known, but you have to represent your citizens, and I think you've always kind of agreed enough of that.
And, you know, it's, it's, you have this, this conflict between learning the best you can and making decisions on behalf of your constituents, your residents, or making the decision your residents would make if they were sitting in your chair today. So, there's always that kind of tension. And then on the other side, it's also, there's a tension between doing what's right for my district versus what maybe is right for the city as a whole.
Right, that's true, too.
Because you represent the city as a whole. Every vote you make affects the city as a whole. So, there's a tension there as well. And, you know, so sometimes you have to, you have to figure out how to deal with those tensions. And, you know, you might lose a little sleep over it if you, if you really care that hard, but you figure your way through. And maybe if you do enough things right and a few enough things wrong, you get the, you get the luxury of being able to run on the post.
That's right. And you get reelected.
Well, think about it, though, it is a balancing act, because, well, you have a district, and that's where you essentially come from or out of. You are relying on kind of what is best for your district, but then, like you said, you have to also think city-wide, too. And you have to look at what's going on in all the districts. You can't make a decision strictly based on your district, you've got to figure out how those factor in. So, it is a balancing act. And I will say, over the years, I've appreciated, I think, as the chamber, you know, there are times when tough conversations happen from the dais within the city council, and you will bring forward questions. And I think, you know, when those questions come across in everyday vernacular and everyday terms, that the people out here who are working and doing their best to get by, that matters because there's the jargon of all of our industries and kind of the high level, but I think when you kind of will break it down and sometimes do that, I think it does help the community to have a better understanding because sometimes you all will go through, it's like we'll hear people say, oh, when they do consent, what happened to all those things? Well, they don't understand how quickly it works, but when you all pull things out, because there's more meat and potato that needs to be discussed, you bring about the questions in the way I think that people, everyday citizens in the community think. And that matters, it really does, it makes a difference.
And I think to that point, I've always, I think I always try to explain why I'm voting the way I'm voting. You know, I want people to understand my thought process, why I'm voting a certain way. And I understand that some people are going to disagree with me, you know, and sometimes, you know, maybe even often, on the most tense issues, I may be the no vote, you know. But I'll tell you what, our community isn't unanimous on anything either.
That's a good point.
And the people who don't want something to happen have a right to be represented, and they, maybe they feel better knowing that they didn't win, but somebody grew it. But I also, you know, I'm not afraid to be the no vote, you know, we don't have to act in unanimity. And then to bring this back to this organization, the Chamber of Commerce, there's another tension, too, between, you know, I suppose you asked me, what do we need? And I said, you know, quality of life for our residents, it's our streets, it's our parks, it's our safety in our neighborhoods and all of that. Well, we also need a strong economic component, we need a strong business community. So, but it's that tension, you know, I need to, we need to be able to have good, healthy neighborhoods to support the businesses we have. And we, but we can't, and we can't lay so much, be it taxes or regulation or whatever, you know, red tape, you know, and slow walking on the business community, that it's detrimental to the neighborhoods, too. We've got to have, so there's a tension there. And sometimes, you know, residents in an immediate area may not like the way that the zoning issue is going, they feel like we're favoring the business community too much in it. And other times we have businesses where we're, you know, we're not as responsive to them because we're being responsive to that neighborhood right next to them. That's another, that's a third tension that you feel in this position. But if you can, add a little tension.
That's right. It shouldn't be there.
It shouldn't be there.
Well, I think you two would know it best because you served Yvonne, and then Bart got elected and took over when you said you weren't running anymore, so between the two of you, I think you know best, absolutely.
Just a few nights ago down here on Glendale Avenue at the corner of 58th, when we were having the lighting ceremony for the new cafe lights on Glendale Avenue, Tom Eggleston walked up. And we were lucky enough, I handed the camera to somebody and got a photograph of the three of us because Tom represented our district before you did.
Yep.
So together there was.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years of girl district council members.
And we all still speak and get along and I think we have a healthy respect.
Unless it's 94 years old and still involved and.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, yep.
Yeah. And that's my Glendale.
That's mine, too. Yeah.
Love it.
Exactly.
We have one more question and it's up to you, Avon.
Well, we're going to wrap it up, but do you have anything you want to add?
That we didn't ask you or you wanted to say, let anyone, our members of the community know anything?
Just, you know, be a strong, independent chamber. If you have second, if you're feeling like you can't express a point of view for some other reason, then you're not as independent as you should be. Engage with us early so that you have a chance to be heard and a chance for us to respond and be flexible. And, you know, obviously, in any conversation, throw out ideas, not ultimatums. That's always helpful to give us, you know, a place to go and, you know, opportunity to better understand where people are coming from. I'm very pleased to see the chamber getting engaged on our downtown and business development here and historic preservation and preserving Murphy Park. I think that's important. And, you know, the Glendale Chamber is much bigger now than just the city of Glendale.
Absolutely.
But it still has Glendale in its heart.
It does.
And, you know, I remember days when the Glendale Chamber, you could see every member. Before this building was built, if you'd been here, you could see every member.
Those were different times. I don't know today if we could see every member. Oh, my gosh.
So, but our, Glendale's downtown is, has become unique. There are no downtowns in the valley left like ours. And it is, it is an of itself a draw. Is it as busy and active as we wish it was right now? No, but throwing what we have out and doing something completely different is not going to save us. You know, if we want the brightest, newest, shiniest, loudest, you know, we have Westgate.
That's right.
And we have Arrowhead Mall and we have the Arrowhead and Bell Road area and all of that. We've got plenty of new shiny. But if we get rid of, you know, if we get rid of our historic patina, then we really will have lost the heart of our community. And we won't have anything to point to that's uniquely us.
Well, we're fighting for that, so, absolutely.
Fighting with you.
Okay, good.
Well, we want to thank you all for taking some time to sit today with Avon, Bart and myself. As you know, the chamber has endorsed candidates and we endorsed Bart in the last time. He is running out of hope, so congratulations there. So we hope that you will join the Glendale Chamber and continue to support Councilmember Bart Turner in his election to Glendale City Council. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you, Bart.
Thanks, Avon. Thanks.